I now call the January 27th meeting of the School Board to order. Apologize, we're running a few minutes behind. We have a full board here in person tonight, so we have nine voting board members present. In opening, as you're willing and able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up, we have the Student Representatives Report. Ms. Sharman.
Thank you. This past weekend, there were two awesome family events and fundraisers in the community. On Saturday, Swarthmore College held a Hoops for Hope game to collect gently-used or new sneakers and donations for Access to Success, a charity that organizes athletic programs for children in Nigeria. On Sunday, Cates held a Put-Put for Lose a fundraiser where families paid $5 to play around in Put-Put. Cates is a nonprofit that serves over 500 children and adults with physical and intellectual disabilities in the community. The funds from the event will be used to purchase new equipment for the facility. SRS will be hosting Bingo Night on Friday, February 7th, with one session from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. and another from 7:30 to 9:00. There will be prize baskets, raffles, baked goods, and more. Each grade has a different theme for their raffle basket: pizza for kindergarten, ice cream sundaes for first grade, coffee, tea, and hot chocolate for second grade, baking for third grade, and game night for fifth grade. If you have items that fit in any of these categories, please consider donating them by this Friday to the front office. On Friday, January 31st, the author Baptiste Paul will visit SRS for a special presentation. Paul was born and raised on the island of St. Lucia in the West Indies. His newest book, I'm Farmer!, chronicles the work of Cameroonian environmentalist Tantuno Forba, who spread new farming and water conservation techniques to rural areas. Students can order any of his books ahead of time with an order form, so the author can autograph them with a personalized message on Friday. Several dazzling dolphins were highlighted last Friday as part of NPE's Three to Be Fridays. This is an award for going above and beyond the three to be at NPE. A short description of how students were respectful, responsible, or safe was not allowed over the daily announcements. Students then had their picture taken and placed on a bulletin board in the main hallway. NPE will host the Fifth Annual Delaware County Campaign Activity Fair next Saturday, February 8th, from 12 to 3:00 p.m. Parents and students can learn about and sign up for the various summer camps and organizations in the area. There will also be a bake sale and a concession stand. On Friday, February 7th, the middle school will have its annual Black History Month celebration. The staff team will perform a dance led by eighth-grade science teacher and club advisor Ms. Lisa Cobb, where over there will be a play to teach students about the Civil Rights Movement and the continued significance of Black History Month today. The middle school is still looking for volunteers for Career Day on Thursday, March 26th. If you love your job and would enjoy sharing what you do for a living with the middle school students, please consider signing up to be a guest speaker. In the past, the school has had law enforcement officials, journalists, actors, engineers, and teachers, among other professions, come in and talk about their careers. The experience is very meaningful for the students as it helps to shape their ideas about their future. There's Thursday is back-to-school night at the high school at 7:00 p.m. Parents can meet their students' new second semester teachers. Thursday is also the day of the AMC Math Competition. Students can stay after school to participate in a 75-minute test to show off their math skills and get some extra credit. The Outdoor Adventure Club is headed to Blue Mountain this Friday, January 31st, after school. Students can have fun skiing, tubing, and drinking warm cocoa in the hills. And finally, this Friday is the high school's first-ever Hayden Bowl. Traditionally, students play teachers in a game of football before Thanksgiving break in the Turkey Bowl, but due to the outbreak of pertussis, the game was canceled and rescheduled for Friday. Despite this flip, students are as excited as ever to watch the teachers lose. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Next, we have the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Palmer.
Thank you, Dr. Grandy. And I'd like to comment this evening on a couple of items on our agenda. First, we have several focus topics on the agenda this evening, which means we have a full house, so welcome to our visitors and thank you for attending this evening. I'd also like to highlight one particular item, an item of note that appears on our agenda under the Finance section. Now, if you look at the agenda, you will see our 2021 Preliminary Budget presented to the School Board for Adoption this evening. This is the same budget as the proposed preliminary budget that was presented by Ms. Q. at our last board meeting. During her presentation, she mentioned that it's very early in the budget process, and it is indeed very early in the budget process, and we are still very much a work in progress. We will continue to refine our budget estimates, and then in May, Ms. Q. will present the proposed final budget, and we would anticipate that the board will take action on that at the June 22nd meeting. Nothing is final until the board takes final action at that meeting. And Dr. Grandy, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Palmer. The board has a couple of announcements. First, the board did meet prior to this meeting in executive session to discuss litigation and a personnel matter, and we will also meet after this meeting to discuss litigation. So that takes us to our focus topics. So as Dr. Palmer mentioned, we have several on the agenda tonight. We have a special guest and then two other presentations. And, Dr. Palmer, I'll ask you to introduce our guests.
I am very pleased to introduce our first focus topic, and January is School Board Recognition Month, and in case you didn't realize it, this is our recognition. And to join us this evening with a special recognition for the board is our State Representative, LeAnn Kruger. LeAnn.
Thank you. Is the mic on, or do I need to do something to turn it on? It's on. Okay, wonderful. Good evening, everybody. I'm pleased to be with you here in January to thank you for your service. Earlier this month, I introduced a resolution on the House floor to designate January as School Directors Month in Pennsylvania. I'm pleased to tell you that it passed unanimously with bipartisan support, which doesn't always happen these days in Harrisburg. And, you know, whether folks are from one side of the aisle or the other, I think most of my colleagues recognize that school directors, like yourselves, work really hard. I believe that you've got the hardest elected office because people stop you in the grocery store, they'll ask about busing schedules. When the new parent portal went into effect in August, I'm sure each of you who were in office at the time got lots of phone calls from friends and neighbors, and you all do this as a volunteer. You're not paid for your service, and I know that especially when there's important issues facing the district, you can be putting long hours in to your service as a school director. So I want to say thank you. And to the new members of the board, I want to let you know that my door is always open. I've called Dr. Palmer from the House floor a couple of times when bills were moving. Sometimes we only have 15 minutes notice about what bills are going to be moving for that day, and she and I have been in close contact in the four and a half years that I've been in office to talk about the issues that impact our public schools. When she calls, in particular, to say, "This is a bad bill. Vote no." I've always voted no and fought those bills on the floor, so thank you to Dr. Palmer for your service. And I will say, as the mom of a second grader at NPE, I am particularly grateful for everything that our district has to offer. My son has had a great experience so far, and I look forward to more years in this district to come. So I've got official citations, certificates of recognition for each of you that I will present now.
I know, you know, as was mentioned, there's a lot of personal commitment. I will ask you for lots of personal commitment over the next two years, so I appreciate that. And to our State Representative, we appreciate your advocacy for public education, and we hope that you will convince more of your colleagues to better support public education. So, Dr. Palmer, will introduce our next topic.
I'm delighted to introduce the second topic of this evening. And Representative Kruger, I was delighted to introduce yours, too. Up second is our Secondary Course Proposals. We're delighted to present them this evening, and I know we have a tag team of folks that are going to be presenting. I am going to say that one of the individuals we thought who was going to be here was George King as part of the presentation, but unfortunately, he went home ill today. Seems to be running through the building, and it got him today. So I know, I believe, the first one up is Dr. Sidorelli Jones. And what I would ask you, Dr. Jones, is, as you have other speakers, if you would introduce them as well.
The dramatic pause is because I'm waiting for the screen to get started. It's starting to emerge. Yeah, yeah. All right, good evening. Thank you for having us here. We're excited at this time of year as we start to take a look at our course offerings and our current offerings, and we look to see where we can be impactful and progressive in teaching and learning. I'm Dr. Denise Sidorelli Jones, and I have been in this position for eight years, so it's always exciting for me to be able to come up and talk about what it is that we're doing in the classrooms. So, I have a little bit of a cold, but I'm going to push through and back up from the microphone when you're near me. All right, so I want to take a look at both the high school and the middle school, so we're really looking at secondary when we do this. And we're going to be hearing from our interim principal, Andrea Lopira, and we're also going to be hearing from Kaitlin Locke, who right now is working in the Curriculum Office just for this year, and she's going to be helping fill in a little bit where George King is not going to be able to make it. So, at the Pennsylvania Standards-Aligned System Conference that happened in November, also known as the SAS Institute, Kaitlin and I attended, along with members from our STEM Advisory Council. And many of the workshops that we attended talked about schools getting really geared toward what they called being "future-ready." A future-ready school believes that every child, regardless of family income or zip code, deserves to have the following things: a personalized, student-centered learning environment, research-based digital learning strategies implemented by caring and qualified teachers. It means having robust learning experiences that prepare students for an increasingly technology-driven workforce and world, and learning that taps into passion and interests for deeper engagement and agency. Lastly, it's about having a clear pathway to post-secondary success through which every child achieves his or her potential. Some very, very lofty goals. It's a multi-year process to become a future-ready school by definition. But since 2018, we have STEM-rich courses embedded into our existing coursework, and this design-thinking idea that we've been pursuing for the past two years has really become part of what we do in our district. So, some of this is standalone coursework that we're going to be talking tonight, actual full courses that we believe are about STEM and design thinking, and some of it is just the idea of embedding more STEM and design thinking into current courses, and so they'll be reflected in some of the changes and the ideas, sometimes even the titles of courses that we're going to go through tonight. We believe that these changes improve our future-ready stance as a school district, and they move the needle toward preparing students for the world and for the workforce. So, our ongoing curricular programming goals have been these two, and we've been supporting them since the STEM Advisory Committee came into being back in 2018. We want to increase our courses that do two things: support STEM careers and that incorporate design thinking. So I'm going to share with you a few facts about STEM and computer sciences embedded in here as well. 8.8 percent, that's the STEM profession growth between the years 2018 and 2028. It is 5 percent for all other occupations, so we're talking about a large amount of growth in the workforce having to do with STEM professions. 19471, guess what that is? It's the number of unfilled computer science jobs in Pennsylvania alone. That is a staggering current number. 590,000 are the new and replacement jobs in PA through 2026 across all professions. So that's a lot of jobs that are going to be coming available for the people as they start to graduate college, as they graduate high school. Big number. 71 percent of them will require computer science skills. 71 percent. When we look at salaries, we're looking at $89,590 is the average computer science salary in PA, but compared to the state average of $50,030, we're looking at a big gap between those jobs that require computer science and those that do not. 50 percent, that number involves STEM jobs in computers or mathematics fields, such as information systems management, software development, and programming, so 50 percent of the jobs are going to have STEM involved in them. 3,769 are the number of Pennsylvania computer science graduates in 2017, and yes, that's three years ago, right? But we're still looking at under 4,000 students who are graduating with a computer science degree to fill all of the jobs. This is abysmal. 22 percent of that number are female. And so as a district, we are very targeted in our need to bring computer science and STEM learning into our classrooms and to increase kids' access to both STEM, computer science, and design thinking. So to that end, I'm going to talk a little bit about the high school's opportunity here for arts and STEM. We have a digital photography course that's taking place right now that has 50 students enrolled in its first year of inception. We would like to offer digital photography, too, that will capitalize on that student interest, and it gives them the opportunity to do portfolio-quality bodies of work. They get to display them in an exhibition, and they could also web design for that as well, so that brings in that computer component. We're also looking for a video and broadcast production course, where students are going to produce documentary-style broadcast video that will focus on school and community programs and events using multimedia tools. So this is going to be really cutting-edge for Strathhaven High School. Students are going to learn techniques, we're going to get into history, equipment, and writing for broadcast journalism. So a couple of exciting courses where we are infusing both STEM and the arts. Again, I want to remind you, we have two goals here. It's supporting STEM careers and incorporating design thinking. So when we take a look at computer science, this is ripe for the second one. So I'm going to take you back to the beginning of our STEM Advisory Council. We formed this in the 2017-2018 school year as a vehicle for WSSD to explore STEM and STEM learning experiences for students at every level and in every grade. It was no easy task. Our STEM career group have explored and are making plans for STEM career fair opportunities so that kids can take a look, especially our ninth and 10th graders, at the various ways in which they can learn about the STEM careers that are going to be employing a lot of our students, especially in Pennsylvania. So we are going to be looking at things like dual enrollment, post-secondary education along the STEM continuum. Computer science is another subgroup. That subgroup became this year's focus, and we had a PA SMART grant that paid for training for pilot group of teachers in fourth and fifth grade, and is also paying for 91 Chromebooks that are going into our elementary schools. In 2018 and 19, the teachers across all levels were introduced to design thinking. If you remember, Carrie Reese, teacher on Special Assignment at the time, came in and talked about her work in design thinking. That group developed this graphic having to do with all of the steps of the design thinking process. So when you go into classrooms, you might see this. We have posters made, they're put in various classrooms throughout the school, and we also have a webpage designed specifically for our design thinking: how it's being used in the school, pictures and videos of projects, really kind of exciting stuff. So we're proud of this graphic, we're proud of the work that's been doing with design, going on with design thinking, and that brings me to our Family and Consumer Science. So in Family and Consumer Science, it's easy to think of it as a cooking class, it might be thinking as child development class. One of our goals was to have design thinking infused into these classes. So, for example, Essentials of Cooking, which is number one over here, will replace what was called American Foods 1. Students certainly are going to understand and learn your culinary techniques, they're going to plan and prepare and collaborate, they're going to execute recipes, but we're going to have them do that with a design-thinking process for some of that work, not just about baking a muffin, but it's about, under what context are you doing it? Who is your client? Why does that muffin have to be the size it is, the shape that it is, how many you have to do, what's your budget? That sort of design-thinking process contextualizes the learning that happens in our Family and Consumer Science classes. The second course is called Culinary Arts. That's going to replace American Foods 2. Same idea, students are exploring advanced culinary techniques, they're going to be doing meal planning, time management, equipment, they're going to be making original recipes, again, under the opportunities to do design-thinking mindset. And the last one would be a brand-new course. This one is called Baking and Pastry Arts. This is a more advanced class. If you've ever been a pastry chef yourself or have been around or tried to bake, it is a science, it is a true science. Students are going to evaluate nutrition and investigate careers, and they're going to work collaboratively in the design-thinking process. What I'm going to do now is I am going to bring you back to the slide, I'm going to keep reminding you that we want to look to incorporate STEM careers and incorporate design thinking, and I'm going to bring up Andrea Lopira, who's going to talk about some of the changes we're looking at in terms of math, business, and our science courses.
Thank you. The first one I'll talk about is financial literacy, and I put this slide up here first because I think there's some background that it might be helpful and important for you to understand. There was a task force in Pennsylvania on economic education and financial literacy education, and the goal of that task force was to require every student in Pennsylvania to take a standalone capstone course in financial literacy, to adopt standalone standards, provide dedicated funding for teacher training and instruction, and to, I'm sorry, and to embed an endorsement for teachers who have that training in financial literacy. So where that task force landed is Act 91, which requires public schools to allow students in grades nine through 12 to apply up to one personal finance credit towards satisfying their social studies, FCS, Financial, or Family Consumer Science, I'm sorry, I'm just nervous, math or business education credit for graduation. For us, social studies and math are both requirements in state of Pennsylvania for graduation, we have four credits for graduation. The other two fall under electives. In the Business Department, we currently have three courses: Business Administration, Accounting, and Marketing. This would be our fourth course in the Business Department, and it would be called Financial Literacy. It's designed for students in grades nine through 12, which I'm really happy about because I feel like it gives students four years of opportunity to access this course. And the studies include things that you would expect it to: income, budgeting, banking, consumer credit, insurance, spending, taxes, investment strategies, transportation, and that's, you know, planning for transportation, is it a car, is it a train, is it a bus? How do we plan financially for that? College loans and other debt, saving for retirement and living independently. So this financial literacy course will be an elective option for students in grades nine through 12, and falls under that task force goals. Applications of Mathematics would be a course in the Math Department, obviously, and the goal for this course would generally would be an end course for students. So this course is designed mostly for seniors who have gone through our math program but want to end their program with a more practical, more hands-on approach, as opposed to a trigonometry or a calculus. We have a lot of students who are going on to four-year competitive programs, but we have a good number of students who are looking for more practical approaches to mathematics. So this course takes, has four distinct sort of units. The first one is Financial Literacy, covering some of the same topics in the entire Financial Literacy course, but paring it down as a unit of study: Statistics and Analysis, Coding, again, going back to what Denise was saying about, about, you know, computer science areas of study. This would expose students to coding in part of their math class, and then there would be mathematical modeling as a conclusion, a way of pulling it all together. Chemistry. Chemistry is not really new to us. I'm just going to give you a little explanation of why it looks a little different, and will look a little different in the Silver Guide. Several years ago, we made a commitment as a district and as a building to phase out career college prep. So we have the honors level, the college prep level, and the career college prep level. We started in ninth grade, then moved to 10th grade. Next year, it's 11th grade's turn. When we were in the ninth grade phase, we were visiting other schools and taking a look at what schools were doing as they were detracking. And one of the things our science teachers picked up on very quickly is that in other schools, they were not detracking in chemistry. In all the other sciences, they were, but not in chemistry. So they came to us with an idea, and they said, "We want to honor the maintenance of a college prep program, but we think that we need to look at it a little bit differently." So Analytic Chemistry honors, there is no change to that course except to the title. It stays the same. Then there's two levels, or there's two courses that are offered at the college prep level in chemistry. One is Analytic Chemistry, and one is Chemistry. If you notice, they're the ones, you can see, there's a lot of similarities, but there are some differences. The Analytic Chemistry does have a science prerequisite and a math prerequisite. The Chemistry does not have a math prerequisite, but it does have the science prerequisite. Most of the units are the same. The Analytic Chemistry includes a unit, Stoichiometry, that includes more mathematical foundation and background, as opposed to the Chemistry CP. The goal is to teach these units in Chemistry CP at a college prep rigor, but maybe with a couple different change in topics, so not to make math a barrier for students. So the goal here is to make sure college prep chemistry is available to all students and not let math get in the way. Before we go on to giving it back to Denise, I did want to mention one other thing, just because we're proud of it at the high school. The Silver Guide that we're publishing this year got a makeover, a much-needed, well-overdue makeover. So I wanted to credit Kate Plows and her students in her digital photography class for helping us with the cover, and Tabitha Duffy helped us with the formatting. The nice thing is, when you go in, it's like a 75 or 80-page document, it'll be a clickable PDF. If you want to look for a course in Family Consumer Sciences, you're going to be able to click on it, it's going to take you right there. So it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal. I think when we took out the clip art, I felt like we made some progress. So I think that's it. And Caitlin is up next, or Denise is up next?
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. No need to be nervous, you were great. So one of the things that bears mentioning is that when we talk about STEM, you know, that, once upon a time, was really just an acronym, and so in that acronym, we have technology, and we have science, and we have math, and we have engineering. And so the changes in science and math is a matter of access. We're looking for students to have more access, students who might have counted themselves as not math-minded students or not science-minded students, much less chemistry. So when we make that more accessible to students, we are still increasing our STEM opportunities. So I'm bringing you back, of course, to our home slide here. I want to talk a little bit more about supporting STEM careers. The Pennsylvania Department of Education made a commitment to computer science in 2016. In that time, Governor Wolf wanted to improve computer science, and he signed Act 86 into law. Act 86 allows students to apply one credit in computer science to math or science, so if they take a computer science course, it can count toward a math requirement or toward a science requirement. That Act 86 also endorsed computer science standards, K-12, which had not been in place before. It made Pennsylvania the national leader in funding for K-12 computer science, such as the PA SMART grant, which we have used to buy 91 Chromebooks for the elementary schools, and to have pilot training for our teachers, and it supported equitable technology education and PD. That was its intent. What I want to do now is I want to talk a little bit about something that has been very dear to me in terms of our look to increase computer science in the school district. In sixth grade, way back when I was first hired here in 2008, our specials looked like this. They were quarterly. We had a traditional art course, we had a music course, we had a health PE, and we had computer science, and they worked with quarters, just like the marking periods are now. You had your first quarter class, your second quarter class, and so on. In 2012, we moved to trimesters instead, and we eliminated computer science completely out of the sixth-grade offerings, which meant students had traditional art, music, and health in trimesters. That was 12 weeks of courses. Soon, last year, actually, we changed our traditional art course to something called Innovative Design. Now Innovative Design was innovative in and of itself, and Richard Law came here and presented on Innovative Design, but it uses arts as an innov- But it uses arts as an innovation design lens, questions like, where does inspiration come from? How does one innovate? How does an artist or designer get their ideas out into the world? This year, Richard Law, our Innovative Design teacher, has been doing something he calls "The Random Project." So I want to be in this class when I hear this kind of thing. A random thing created in a random style for a randomly selected company. Sounds pretty crazy, but our sixth-grade students get really excited about it because they love the freedom to be able to imagine and to create. They don't always get that. And so they're using computer graphics to make those creations. They're doing an exploration of robotics this year. They're using our drafting boards that we bought for them to do design and elevation drawings in scale. So it's talking about the manipulation of space, that sort of thing. They're doing something called a photo arc, which is a visual construction of thousands of animals, many being targeted as going extinct. And he's working on something called Angles on the Water, which is a piece that considers tessellations and fractals as mechanisms that can explain visual phenomenon of nature. If you wanted to come visit, that would be the class to come see. So we changed to Innovative Design, but we kept trimesters: Innovative Design, Music, and Health PE. What we are proposing is that we add back in the computer science that has been missing since 2012. To add that back in, I'm going to bring in Caitlin Locke, so she can talk a little more about what that would look like and some of the rationale for why we're doing that.
So this is our current requirements in the middle school for computer science. We have two semester-long courses, one in seventh grade and one in eighth grade, as it exists now. And on a secondary level, this is the only computer science that's required in the district. So it's very possible that a student could graduate from sixth to 12th grade with just this one year combined, seventh and eighth grade, having computer science. There's no other required courses. It's elective based at the high school, the courses that they have offering. And then what we cover now is bulleted down below. With the addition of the sixth-grade course, we would keep the continuity of digital citizenship between all three courses. We'd be able to move the introduction of what a computer is, the input-processing-storage-output model of a computer, down to sixth grade. We'd be able to introduce, whoop, I'm going the wrong way. We'd be able to introduce students to HTML in sixth grade, which is the easiest entry point for coding, because it's very language-based, English-language-based, so it's very accessible for us to introduce coding. And then we would also be able to start having the students work with JavaScript through animation. That would allow us to progress our seventh and eighth-grade courses, to really offer a lot more to our students, so that they had a really strong taste of all the different areas of computer science in the middle school, and then give them all the information that they need to be able to set them up for choosing those electives, if that's an area that they'd like to go down in high school. And if it wasn't something that they wanted to go down and take an elective in high school, they would still have a strong foundation set up for them. So whatever their future is, as Denise said earlier, 71% of jobs have a computer science component to it. They still would have a working knowledge to be able to access that information and participate in those conversations. So you'll see that we'd be able to do some game design in seventh grade. We'd be able to go even deeper in eighth grade with the web design going into Bootstrap, and then add in more of our physical computing devices. Local Robos were a robot that the middle school home and school purchased for us, that we'd really like to have more time to be able to work with. That would also expose the kids to Python, which is the most cutting-edge of the coding languages, and be really important for our kids to have some exposure to. And they'd also get to work with a physical computing device in eighth grade as well. So it would give us that flexibility in our curriculum, and would add nine more weeks of computer science instruction that our students would be guaranteed to have in their six to 12 span in the district.
Do you have questions?
Thanks for the presentation. I had a question about with chemistry, when you go into the three levels there. When you looked at other high schools or other programs, was there any other disciplines that they had that in, or were there some disciplines that you have considered maybe going back to, like, three things like that?
So are you talking about other sciences?
It could be other sciences or other, yeah. So within sciences, I know with chemistry, you can do different amounts, depending on how much math you have, which is the rationale behind there. But were there any other, like, when you looked at other, like, high schools, any other places where they thought that having the three different divisions was still worthwhile?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. I don't know if Katie brought any of that information back in terms of science, but I do know that I have seen this model most specifically in chemistry in other school districts, for the very reason you identified, which is, it's that math that can sometimes, what should I say, reduce a student's self-efficacy, because they'll believe that the math comes first, and that interrupts their access point to chemistry. And so I think in other districts that I've seen, that's the dividing line, and so people are programming for that dividing line. I don't see it so much in things like social studies. I'm not sure if you've seen it anywhere in math or English. I don't know that that's a thing, Andy, no. So it's an interesting question, though, and I can certainly bring it up at a curriculum director's meeting to see if anybody's done anything like that. But I haven't heard of anything off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Okay. Just being totally honest, I'm a little skeptical of the career facts that's grounding some of this conversation. So, for example, 71% of jobs will require computer science skills. Like, what exactly is in that set of computer science skills? You know, without knowing that, I have no way to evaluate whether what you're telling me is a great, you know, idea. Does it really, you know, or is this Microsoft Word and email? And that's, you know?
Right.
We're all computer scientists, then.
Right, right. I think it really falls along the lines of things that have to do with coding and programming. You know, this is Caitlin's wheelhouse, and I can, certainly you can jump in if you want to, but, yeah.
Most of the stats were pulled from code.org, which does a lot of advocacy for computer science, and also...
Right. That makes me more suspicious, but go ahead.
Okay. The labor of Bureau, or the labor of Bureau of Statistics, yeah, the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. And the idea is really that, like, what you mentioned, Word and things like that, that's not computer science. That's computer literacy, right, which has nothing to do with computer science. So it was speaking to actually understanding the way that computers work, and the language that computers use, and how algorithms work, and how immersed in all of our daily lives that impacts everything that we do. And to be able to have some working knowledge of a language, of that language, when you're at a table, is important for our students, even if they aren't computer science majors, right? They still need to be able to be in a room with colleagues that maybe have a lot of experience with that, and be able to have conversations and know what they're talking about, even if they didn't major in it, right? So it's just giving them that baseline foundation in computer science more than anything.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, in other statistics that I'm a little, I'm not buying, because I've read this, how this gets deconstructed, is the salary information. I mean, there's been a lot of research that shows that arts and humanities professions equal computer science salaries over the lifetime, because they pick up and accelerate faster toward, as your career progresses, whereas computer science jobs tend to fall off as they get replaced by new technologies that render, you know, what they've learned obsolete and younger graduates coming in who have learned now what they need to know. So I'm not, I'm not totally sold on that either. And I just want to say, I didn't, I don't think, and this is on me, but I don't think I realized that we're not teaching art, we're not offering art classes in the middle school now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we are? It's just, it's not required? Because then I saw...
Oh, no. It's, we have art.
Okay. That graphic that you showed made me think it was replaced by design thinking.
No, no, no. In sixth grade, the Innovative Design course is just sixth grade. This is just sixth-grade specials.
Great.
And even that, I mean, if you walk up and down the halls...
Yeah, there's art everywhere, right.
80% of that is him doing math. What he's doing is...
You mean art?
I'm sorry. Which feels math to me. What he's doing is he's contextualizing that art project into design thinking. So, for example, he did a whole thing on chairs, right? What is, how's a chair constructed? He brought in all kinds of different chairs. And then students designed a chair, and then drew it, rendered it, and they could use any sort of art medium. So we taught them the art mediums that they could use, including computers. And it was a fusion of the two. In seventh and eighth grade, we have full marking period of art in both of those.
Oh, good.
Yeah. In addition to the required three credits in the high school for art, music, and performing art. So our students actually get about 54 weeks of art in the secondary program. Yeah.
Others? John?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Sure.
I also had a couple of questions about the computer science component.
Sure.
Looking at the curriculum slide, which I think was one of your last slides, yes, that one.
Yeah.
So I understand why computer science is coming down from the top. I've read about it. I get it, whether or not I agree with it. I get it. My question is that, I'm looking at the curriculum there. What is a computer? The web design into HTML, and the coding, and the game design. For today's set, you know, an 11, 12-year-old in sixth grade, am I just kind of getting the exaggerated description of that course? Because it seems a little bit like they may be ahead of those prices.
Right, yeah, I agree. In fact, Caitlin said when, she said, "When I put in the words 'what is a computer,' I know this is going to elicit questions."
Okay. Sorry, Caitlin. I don't mean to be so predictable.
You have to be at the mic.
No, yeah, and I mean, I'm just trying to make quick bullets of the basics of what we could cover. So, I'm sorry. So I, if you have specific questions about any of them, I can do my best to answer them.
I mean, so then I would go down, because I have some kids in SRS, for example, and you talk about the game coding and the coding, and then the computer literacy, which I believe they've all...
Computer literacy isn't even, isn't any of these things here.
Well, that, yeah. I mean, but moving past that to the coding and the game design, I believe that's already there. So I guess my question is, do you coordinate? I mean, I would think the answer is yes, but I want to hear it from you. Do you coordinate with them to see, you know, where have these kids, what have these kids already learned? Because when I'm looking at that, it seems redundant to me, but perhaps I am incorrect.
I think that you're right, that some kids do have more exposure than others, and we're working right now and focusing on the elementary curriculum. There's part of the STEM Advisory Council, there's a computer science subgroup that is working on a K-5 scope and sequence for computer science skills and digital literacy skills, separate from one another, to make sure that we have that alignment, and that we can build all of the skills, so that the kids come into sixth grade with more of a level playing field. And then absolutely, these would change as a result of that. Right now, the, like, I've taught both the seventh and the eighth-grade course as they stood in the previous slide, and the range of abilities in my students is insane. But the great thing about that is, it's really easy to differentiate, because there's so many ways that students can access different levels through the computers. So I'm able to, you know, if somebody already is fully competent in game design, and they want to learn Python, I can have one student on one computer working on Python while the other person's still working on JavaScript, or whatever. Like, it can be so individualized because of the space that we're working in.
So that brings me to my next question, because can you? And the reason I'm wondering, and I don't, I don't mean that as an insulting question, but because, you know, from what I understand, in these classrooms, they're not small, and then the kids are kind of put in front of these computers, and I guess it, you know, on top of some kids maybe not being where the others are, and that's not necessarily because they're brighter or because they've had access at home, it's because they're getting it at the elementary level. How do you supervise that? I mean, how do you spread yourself that thin? Because my concern when it comes to, I mean, that's a question for any class, right? But it becomes a concern in the computers, because as they're sitting there and maybe not being tended to, there is an ability to go into other places on those computers. And I know that because I have ears.
Yes, but, I mean, we, like, we have, like, there's, there's ways for us to see what the kids are working on at any, at any given moment, first of all. So it makes me, like, I have the ability to see what everybody's working on. So if somebody has gone off path, it's very easily noticed, all right? And then, to answer your other question about how am I able to spread myself that thin, you're right. It's a team effort. Like, it takes the student advocating for themselves, for me coming up with things. Like, it's something that we have to work at. It's not 100% innate, but as we work on developing this curriculum and bolstering what's happening at the elementary school, the continuity will come there, so.
Okay. I guess because I have pause when I see that being redundant with what they're already getting, and then knowing that, I think, again, the computer science classes present a unique challenge for the instructor, because there is so much at that child's fingertips, and the supervision of that concerns me in a way that it wouldn't concern me with another type of class. So that gives me some pause.
Yeah. But, I mean, we, like, we have a system on the computer where we can block what they're accessing, see what they're on, stop them from limit, like, we can limit, they can't have web access, we can only, like, there's, like, all different ways for us to...
I know there's a system that, I don't know if that's always working.
And you can, you can see that from your computer, too, right? Not just, I mean, when you're up there, and they think they're getting away with stuff. They're not.
Yeah. And I mean, there's ways that, there's ways that kids work on trying to get around it all the time, but, you know, that's in, that's in any classroom, that can happen.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just operating off the different things that I've become knowledgeable about as a parent.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, yeah, certainly share, so that's what, that's what I mean. It takes a team effort, like...
Thank you.
Kelly?
Yeah, just, just two points. Maybe three, actually. Going back to the, perhaps not consistency yet in the elementary schools about access to some of these things, I believe, I might be mistaken, but I believe in some schools, it's only being offered as enrichment right now, where you're getting the access to some of the coding and so forth. So I don't, I don't, my experience is that it's not built into, formally built into the elementary curriculum. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. And I really appreciate that you're circling back around to it. It's one of the things that I was going to say as well. So one of the things that has been happening in terms of computer science at the elementary level is, because there was disparity with how much technology was available and how much training was available for the teachers at the elementary level, it became sort of a teacher-by-teacher preference for how they would fill that enrichment or enhancement time. And those that were very tech-savvy and received training, or just were particularly excited about it, would bring their kids down to the computer lab, and they would do that kind of work. But there was no formally-written scope and sequence of skills. And so at the middle school, it became important to make sure that we did some things that kind of cleaned the slate of what everybody did and didn't understand, and then to differentiate from there. And so I think what we're trying to do at the elementary school with this PA Smart Grant, with the infusion of 91 Chromebooks, and we apply consistently for the foundation money, so that we can bring in even more technology, so that students can start using computer science, rather than just using technology to learn by, if that makes any sense, right? Because it's not just about, let me put them in front of a computer. Let me hand them an iPad. It's, that's, that's just screen time, and that's a whole other conversation. That's not what we're looking for. What we're really looking for here is for students to understand how that computer is doing what it's doing, how it's thinking and operating, and how, the more you understand that, the more marketable you become in STEM careers, and the further you can go in the offerings we have in WSSD, most especially at the high school, where it becomes an elective. So if we can ignite that spark early enough in elementary school, these things here, you're right, they're going to push down into elementary and become part of what the elementary scope and sequence can look like in fourth and fifth grade, to kind of get them ready. And for those kids who are, this isn't their thing. They're done in eighth grade. There is no graduation requirement that they have to go beyond eighth grade. But it gives them what we feel and what the state is telling us needs to be a base level of understanding for what's almost new math, right? It's this computer math concept, and we're being hard-pressed to, to make sure that we have kids have access to it. So that's the thinking behind all of it.
So just two other comments. One, in terms of the, some of the data supporting all of this and the career, future careers that are available, it's a conversation we're having a lot at work as we look at jobs of the future. And when you start thinking about, and if you just simply read about automation, and how much automation is coming into everyday life, it's actually quite frightening. But the general job replacement is moving into the kinds of jobs that come out of what we're talking about, that absolutely require computer science skills, and the automation thing is, right now, it's happening. So in your point of, we can't hire people, we are having an incredibly difficult time hiring people with the skills that you're laying out here, Python being one of those, because it's a newer, newer language, for example, and the fact that our kids are getting introduced to this already, and this is exciting to me. The last thing, and we don't need to talk about it now, because I know we're running a little bit late, I'm excited about the broadcast course offering at some point. I'd like to understand whether... I'd like to understand whether we have the, the systems and the technology that's available to support it, or if that's something that's gonna need to come along with the addition of the course itself.
Do you know that answer in terms of the support?
Can you?
You have to be at the mic.
Just so people can hear at home.
Our previous teacher in that area had a video production course. So we do have video production equipment. Our current teacher is very forward-thinking. I will not be surprised if she comes forward and says, "Hey, there's some new stuff on the market." And I think we would be definitely open to that, because she is very innovative.
Well, thank you. I know that it's always easiest to just keep doing the same things. And so we appreciate your efforts to continue to push to develop new courses and look forward to future conversations, so.
Feel free to reach out to me via email, and I'm happy to sit down and talk or chat via email.
All right, so, here we go. We're going on to the third focus topic. We will get there.
Okay, as I am getting technical assistance from Dr. Jones, she's logging out and logging me in, the third focus topic this evening is the calendar. And what I have for you to see tonight is the draft of the 2021 calendar, knowing that it is for presentation for the board this evening, but it will be for action for the board at the next board meeting in February. Thank you. So, looking at our calendar for this year, I want to just take a moment to go through the highlights of what are those priorities that we put into our calendar. First and foremost, we want to make sure our kids have enough instructional minutes and instructional days. And when we look at those instructional minutes, at the elementary level, we are required to have 900 hours for our elementary students. And for students from sixth to grade 12, they're required to have 990 hours. They're also required at all levels to have 180 instructional days. And I'm gonna come back to that, because instructional days don't always mean time that a child is in the classroom. There are other activities that count for instructional days as well. So that's our first priority. The second priority that we look at is what professional development initiatives do we have in the district? And one of the district goals is that we have very high-quality professional development. So we do focus on a tremendous amount of initiatives that we have, some that are our own and some that are required by the state, but we have to fit that in during the course of a school year. The next piece that factors into determining our calendar for the next year is what is the impact on our teachers and what is the impact of the teacher's contract? To give you an example of that, we schedule our conference days a certain way so that we can accommodate the number of parents that would be visiting with a teacher. But when we do that, we also have, within our teacher's contract, how time beyond the school day can be structured. So, for instance, we are offering certain events of an evening nature. There are times when we'll give off an appropriate time where we might have a day where the student, the teachers aren't in as offsetting the time when they may have been in the evening. One piece that did come up last year, we had a lot of comments on the calendar. And we took in all of the feedback that we got from parents. There were comments about the number of early dismissals, the number of days that we had off in general, coupled with the early dismissals. Could we have those days occur on certain days of the week, perhaps making a longer weekend for parents and not have them so much in the middle of the week? But we had a lot of comments, so we tried to go back and address as many of them as we could, and knowing that all of that has direct impact on our parents. So, looking at the calendar this year that's proposed, we would be proposing starting on September 8th and ending on June 18th. This does not start us before Labor Day. We are a district that has historically not started before Labor Day. And while this looks very late, we also did have this date occur in the past as well, one time. I believe it is, we started on September 8th in the 2009, 2010 school year. At the elementary level, we have student days of 179 student days and 13 Act 80 days. And those Act 80 days can be days that are designated on our calendar for specific professional development responsibilities and also parent-teacher conferences. So we're looking at a student year of 179, but a teacher year of 192. At the middle school, we have 182 student days factored in and 10 of those Act 80 days for 182 student days, 192 teacher days. And then at the high school, we have an additional student day for 183 and only nine of the Act 80 professional development days. So a total of 192 teacher days as well. You might say, why do we have more high school days than elementary days? And it has to do with the length of our day. And when we're calculating instructional minutes, it's not the time that the children are in school. It's the time that the children are in school in front of their teachers. So they might be here, but then there is the lunch period, there's recess, there's passing time. None of that counts. So to give you a point of reference, at the elementary day, there are 316 instructional minutes. At the middle school day, there are 341 instructional minutes. And at the high school, there are 333 days. So one would look at it, it's just a little bit less number of minutes at the elementary than it is at the middle school. But the requirement is 900 hours at the elementary versus 990 at the high school. So the instructional minutes do play or come into play. And our high school day is very short by comparison with other school districts. We just make our minimum, so that's why I do need the 183 days. What I thought might be most meaningful for parents to show that we actually did listen to what they were saying last year was to do a direct comparison of the 1920 school calendar to the proposed calendar. So when I'm looking at full-day professional development days that we have within our calendar or conference days within our calendar. So if I'm looking at the high school for 1920, I'm sorry, all schools, for 1920, we had three days for full-day professional development, one of those days being Election Day. By comparison, for the 2021 school year, we only have two. We maintained one of them being Election Day, but we reduced one full day during the school year for all students being off. At the grades K to eight, we have one day in 1920, and we maintained one day in 2021, and that particular day is Election Day. So if you wonder why is one in April and one is May, it's for the primary election. For the elementary conferences, we had three days and we maintained the three days. From the feedback that we've had from parents, the conference schedule that we have works pretty well. So for a total of full-day professional development days within the school calendar, we had seven days in 1920, and we only have six in 2021. Trying to listen to that parent feedback. Same type of comparison for our early dismissals. This was the area we focused on the most. There were three early dismissals for all schools for 1920, one of them being the last day of school. This year, the only one that we have district-wide is the last day of school. So saving two early dismissals. For our grades K to eight, there are days that we do need to do work throughout the school year. That was one of the items that I explained when I talked about the calendar last year. We can't just have our PD at the beginning of the year or at the end of the year. There are certain times during the year that we have work that we need to do. So we maintained the three days throughout the school year. At the elementary school, we had one early dismissal right before the winter break, and we also maintained that one. That has to also do with our conference schedules. This would be, while we do have the evening conferences, this would be one of those give-back days. And then, for grades six to eight, our conference schedules work well there as well. So we maintained the same time period, the same two days. So looking at 1920, we had 19 early dismissals, and we're proposing seven this year. And that's the rationale with where they fell. It wasn't just arbitrary. And where we could, we linked the full day or the early dismissal to the weekend. There's certain days we could not, such as the Election Day or where they fall on before the winter break. But for any area where we had the elective choice, we tried to make it link to a weekend. The piece I said at the beginning is, tonight it's presented to the board, but the board is not taking action on it. It was also posted with our agenda in the Board Docs platform, so it was available when... Well, Mr. Berman, I'm looking at you. Could you look at? Could you just glance at that to see if it's on there? And I apologize, I was gonna say, I, it was on there Friday evening when I posted it myself. But perhaps...
Yeah, I think there is some technical aspect we need to figure out where it was meant to be posted and somehow it wasn't visible.
We'll go back and double-check that, because I thought I double-checked that myself, but I thought perhaps...
Intent was to have it...
Yeah, but perhaps... Yeah, but I thought we'll go back and double-check.
Double-check, yeah.
Yeah, double and triple-check. So I thought the intent was definitely to put it there, because I knew we were having people question it. It is there now, and it is there well before the board will take action next week. But the intent was to make it public along with our agenda so that the public did not have to wait for it. I thought we'll double-check that. Now, the board has it, the public has it, and I don't know if you have any specific questions, but what my goal tonight was to really lay out what was similar or what was different from last year to try to show what that rationale is that goes into the calendar. I think you're worn out from the other presentations.
Damon?
I hate to mention snow to jinx things, but I was wondering if you could explain, because we get this question every year about snow days and where we have to add days on to it. Could you explain how, that, that, Act 80 days and how, how ours, our calendar accommodates so we don't have to worry about that?
Thank you. Had I thought of that, I would have mentioned it, but thank you for bringing that up. Within our calendar, we have planned for snow days so that we don't have to make them up at the end of the year. It would be our goal that we end on June 18th and do not have to extend our school year to the next week. I know some other school districts plan light and have to add days. We always plan to have that extra piece. So to give you an idea, at the elementary school with the schedule or the calendar that is being presented, we have almost 32 hours built in. So that's a fair amount of days that we would be able to do at the elementary school. And we would still make the 180 days because of the additional days that we have built in for Act 80. So we are in wonderful shape at the elementary schools. At the middle school, we have just under 30 hours built in the calendar that we have. And it's because of the amount of minutes that we have in a day, and we have no problem with the 180. We're really good, elementary and middle. Not so good at the high school, but covering a few days. So what we have right now is 13.9 hours, or just under 14 hours. And an instructional day at the high school is 5.55 hours. So we've got almost three full days built in. So our goal here is to not add days at the end of the year. We have not done that in the past. When we did an analysis, do you add on an extra day if you're one day short? We've looked at what the financial impact of that is, and honestly, we thought it was a break-even not to run the extra day, because we've got roughly three days built into our system that we would be able to make it. And with the Act 80 days that the board designates on the calendar, we don't have an issue from a 180-day point of view either. We plan ahead for that. So our goal would not be to add days. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any questions. I'll just add that I think there is a, a technical issue we will solve, hopefully, quite soon, where the calendar was intended to be on the public agenda, and I don't think it's actually currently accessible for some reason.
We will get on that.
But we will solve that ASAP.
And I'm hoping it's not, I'm hoping it's not technical error on my part, but I thought, no matter what, I will figure out what it is.
I got it on the public site this morning. I don't know, it might not be there now, but...
Okay. Seems we need some computer science background, so, just kidding. Couldn't help it. So thank you, Dr. Palmer. All right. So thank you for everyone hanging in there. Responses to items for action on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight related to topics on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our first item, which is the minutes. So our first item for action is the approval of the minutes from the January 13th regular business meeting, and I so move. Do we have a second? Marilyn? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Item passes nine to zero. So moving on, we have multiple items for action in personnel. Are there any items on the list that anyone would like to separate from the rest? Okay. So, let me walk through these four. We have, first, the approval of leaves of absence for three certified staff and four non-certified staff as listed in the agenda. We have the approval of three appointments. Matthew McKenna, a social studies long-term substitute teacher at the high school, replacing Amanda Lawson through June 19th. Joanne Morris Brady, a Spanish long-term substitute teacher at the high school, replacing Pamela Caneda through June 19th. And Michael Harding, a language arts short-term substitute teacher, replacing Jeannie Petrazak through February 7th. Next, we have the approval of additions to the 2019, 2020 activities supplemental appointments as listed in the agenda. And last, we have the approval of all Nether Providence Elementary, Swarthmore Rutledge, and Wallingford Elementary certified teaching professionals, non-teaching professionals, and staff to work on the positive behavioral interventions and support strategies and curriculum at the rate of $37 per hour and the corrected rate of instructional support staff at their contracted hourly rate, a total not to exceed 225 hours for each school for the 2019, 2020 school year. And as a note, this is a correction from our last board meeting where the hourly rate for the instructional support staff was incorrect. So that is why it is here again. All of these items in this section are as attached or described in the agenda. Do I have a motion? Jerry? And do we have a second? Is that Michelle? Okay, thank you, Michelle. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Now, item passes nine to zero. So moving on to curriculum, we have four items for action. First, we have the approval of the two 2019, 2020 school year-related service provider contracts as described in the agenda. Second, we have the approval of the Strathhaven High School course offerings for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented this evening. We have the approval of the Silver Guide Program Planner for the high school for the 2020, 2021, that's turning out to be hard to say, school year as attached. And we have the approval of the middle school course offerings as presented this evening. Do I have a motion? Kelly? Do we have a second? Michelle? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The item passes nine to zero. So we have seven items for approval in finance. I'm going to group the first four and the seventh and come back to the fifth and the sixth. So we first have the approval of payments of invoices to vendors from December 5th, 2019, to January 20th, 2020, as attached. The approval of the treasures report for November and December 2019. With the approval of the treasures report for November and December 2019. We have the acknowledgement of the receipt of financial statements for November and December 2019 as stipulated. With the approval of budget transfers as stipulated. And then moving down to item G on the agenda, we have the approval of a new student activity account for the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. All of these are as attached or described in the agenda. Do I have a motion? Marilyn? Do we have a second? Thank you, Michelle. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Uh, items pass nine to zero. So item, uh, the next item on here is the adoption of the 2020-2021 preliminary general fund budget of $87,129,381 with the following millage rates. Nether Providence Township Rose Valley Borough, 48.3654, and Rutledge Borough Swathmore Borough, 48.8128 as listed in the agenda. Do I have a motion? Jerry? Do we have a second? Kelly? Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Uh, item passes nine to zero. Okay. Next up, we have the authorization for the administration to apply for the Department of Education Act 1 exception for special education expenditures. Do I have a motion? Marilyn? Do I have a second? Kelly? Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? And the item passes nine to zero. Now we have time for comments from the audience related to things we didn't just vote on. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none. Uh, do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? Marilyn?
I just, um, want to raise something with the, uh, late Labor Day. Next year, our calendar is again ending in mid-June and I think the late Labor Day hits again the following school year and I think this would be a good time to consider starting the school year the week before Labor Day, moving into the future, and I know that's something that we may need to, uh, give families a heads-up about, uh, long in advance, um, to plan for that.
Yeah, and I think in general, I think a goal for next year is to undertake the calendar process much earlier regardless, um, because I know it's often a source of stress, uh, for families, um, not knowing what the calendar is and, and people would like to know sooner, so, um, we do have that same calendar issue next year and so we'll try to embark on a, on a conversation, I think, that, that begins much sooner. Any other new business? Okay, thank you, this meeting is adjourned.